Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school board meeting. Let me start with a few items to get on the record. It's now 7:00. It's Tuesday, August 28, 2018. We're in the C.R. Room of the Community Center. It is a time, date, and place for the scheduled meeting of the Carson City School District School Board. With that, our first agenda item is a flag salute. And Stacy, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Will you please join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Agenda item two, adoption of the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Here we have a motion in two seconds. Any comments from the public? Saying none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And before we go to the superintendent's report, just let me, for the record, reflect that Richard Varner, one of our school trustees-elect, is in the audience with us. And with that, Richard, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In the recent past, we have reported the enrollment numbers at the start of the new school year. And as you know, those numbers have varied wildly. And so, we have slowed that process down to let the time and the school rolls and families solidify in their respective schools. And so, tonight, I have a new number for you. I made a number or a statement regarding our enrollment number back on the first night of school. And today's enrollment number is 7,708 students, which, if you compare that against the same time from last year, we're actually one student short. So, coming in at about even so far. Now, keep in mind that typically, Labor Day is a very good indicator. And as it so happens, Labor Day this year also falls on our 11th school day, which is also an important date in terms of count. Because in Nevada, students stay on school rolls for 10 days, but on the 11th day, if they haven't shown up to school yet, those numbers are taken off of the rolls. So, on the 4th of September, we should have a very good indication of the true number of students that we have in our schools. And I'll report that as soon as it's known. I'd also like to let the trustees know, Mr. Kornick made me aware of this, that our ninth district school was given the status of Energy Star certification. And I wanted to tell you what that means, because it's actually pretty interesting and very amazing. To be considered an Energy Star building, this building, and of course, ours, nine of ours meet this criteria, they have to meet some strict standards that are established by the Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA. An energy audit is performed, and then the building that's being looked at is compared against other Energy Star buildings. And that building must be at at least 75% of similar building types in terms of energy efficiency. And so, all nine of our schools that have received this designation perform better than 75% of the schools in the United States in terms of energy efficiency. And the only one that's left is Pioneer. And right now, of course, we have a new building being constructed there, and so, we expect that it will join our other list of schools, which really is a feather in our cap as a school district. And so, speaking of Pioneer, I was able to attend their construction meeting today. Q&amp;D is doing a great job and very supportive of Mr. Zona, as he's trying to hold school in that very small campus, and there is a considerable amount of construction going on. Wanted to let our trustees know, and also our neighbors over in that Pioneer campus area, that they will be pouring the concrete slab on September the 5th. And that's likely to start very early in the morning. And expect some noise. And, you know, please provide us a little patience there, and we'll certainly help to do all that we can as that next important part of that construction process happens. So, that's my report.
Richard, do you have an enrollment number for Pioneer? Just as of this date?
I can tell you, it's approximately 120 students. I don't know that exact number. Let me see if I brought that. Do you have it, Mrs. Kima? Oh, I did, too. Bring it.
152. 152 for Pioneer.
All right. Thank you. Richard, you have it?
I concur. Sorry, that's all I have. I didn't realize you were waiting for me to finish up.
Okay, we'll go on to board reports. And we'll start with Pioneer High School and report on what's going on.
12 Pioneer High School students are attending the Rock Creek trip this week. They will be spending three nights and four days out in nature, learning leadership skills and participating in team-building experiences. Savannah Levy is our senior spotlight. She is a senior at Pioneer High School. She has caring disposition and has helped mentor other new students. She has assisted in the office as an aide, served as a leadership student, helped decorate for school dances, and she is in her second year in the Health Information Management Program for CTE. Savannah maintains a GPA of 3.25 while also working at Sierra Vista Children's Academy. After high school, Savannah would like to attend college and major in education. Her goal is to become an elementary school teacher. Sophomore Casey Buford earned the first annual Paula Cannon Service Award. It is important for parents and guardians to update Infinite Campus information as soon as possible. Students interested in participating in school sports should visit the office to find out more information. Any student who wants a locker or who are in need of a schedule change should also visit the office. There is no school on Monday, September 3rd due to the Labor Day holiday. School photos are on September 6th. Construction is progressing at Pioneer High School, and things are looking good. Thank you to the members of the board.
Just one question on the construction, and Richard mentioned it, you mentioned it. How are the students getting along with this? I mean, you're in the first week.
It's working out pretty good so far. Like, it's, there's not much changes, really, but it definitely is kind of an inconvenience. But it'll be all better once it's all settled.
Carson High?
By far, right now, the most important thing on the forecast for Carson High School, probably homecoming week. And that's going to be starting the week of October 13th. Well, that's when the dance is. It's going to be just like every other homecoming. Right now, we already have the, um...
Still haven't changed since we've all gone to school.
Yeah. Still the same events. You know, Monday will be a bonfire, Tuesday will be a lip sync activity, you know, Wednesday is going to be an after-school thing at the Community Center, Wednesday Night Live, just a thing to get all the students together. Thursday, we're going to have the JV football team playing, so, as well as volleyball teams. It'll be sort of a tailgate thing. And then Friday, of course, is the football game, and the dance will be on October 13th. We do, Student Council did agree on a theme for the dance, but we're not really sharing that information right now until it's all set in stone. Other than that, I'd say the first week of school at Carson High School went pretty well. One thing the students complained about the most is probably the headphone policy, but I think they'll get over it. You know, other than that, I'd say it's gone really well, actually. You know, students aren't really complaining about how it's gone so far, so you can tell that they just kind of like it, so, yep.
And a congratulations to the football team on Friday. That was a super game.
Yep.
Just a quick report. I attended Fritsch's back-to-school night last Wednesday, and it was very well-attended. And I heard a lot of comments from parents. Well, first of all, there's a lot of new faces at Fritsch, so that was fun. And then also, a lot of parents commented on the new construction and the extra classrooms and the connected hallways. And I also attended Carson Middle School's sneak peek, which was also well-attended, because that's when they get their schedules and their lockers and everything. And there were quite a few comments about the new schedule change, so wishing them luck tomorrow, because tomorrow's the first day that they have the block schedule at Carson Middle School. So, hopefully, it all goes smoothly for those kiddos.
Done?
A few exciting things happening over at Seliger Elementary School. Kindergarten map testing. The assessment is next week, September 4th through the 7th. Also, September 18th, and where do I have that here? September 18th is Seliger Family Night. The theme for Seliger's first Family Night is fluency for reading and math. And families will be able to play fluency games with their children and take home materials to play with them at home. The PTO will be serving refreshments and connecting with families. Also, Picture Day at Seliger is September 20th, to put on your calendar. And the annual pumpkin patch.
Oh, yes.
Saturday, October 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also, I want to plug a fundraiser for the Carson High School Band Program. September 15th, the morning of September 15th, 8:00 a.m. to noon, Capital Ford. Drive for your school fundraiser, where if a driving-age person, one per family, would come and test-drive a Ford that morning, the band program gets a donation of $20 from Capital Ford.
For Carson High School, I was just going to report that SAT testing occurred this past weekend. And as fun as that always is, I think it went pretty well. Interesting note on that, though, the, I get, what is it, the College Board website that sponsors the SAT, their website was down for maintenance. So, a lot of students who needed to print their passes out for the SAT test were, I don't know if anybody, you heard anybody talking about that, some were freaking out about it. But it got resolved kind of last minute. My daughter was one of them. It took a couple of phone calls to the College Board and got it figured out. But aside from that, it went pretty well. Mrs. Grunert reminded me yesterday, all seniors, to come to the high school, see your advisor, your guidance counselor, and do your senior grad check, just to make sure everything is in order and there's no surprises as you get closer to graduation. And then, it's not underway yet, but part of the construction at the high school to connect the, to get the buses off of Robinson Street, that should be gearing up fairly soon. I don't know the exact date, but they're going to put the buses through directly from the transportation yard to the south parking lot to keep them off of Robinson Street. And that should be occurring fairly soon. And that's my report.
That buildup's getting big.
Stacy? Mark Twain's open house is tomorrow at 5:30. And that's all I have of school reports. You want me to do NASB, too?
Do the NASB.
Okay.
Doing the NASB.
Doing the NASB. So, I've got the pleasure of representing NASB at the Summer Leadership Conference in Chicago. And you can read all about my adventures in the newsletter coming out. It's going to be a little late, because it took me a little while to put it all together, because I had to do all the writing. And Laurel will tell you how that goes. And I thank you to Laurel and staff for doing our nominations. Unfortunately, I think you're sitting out more than half of the committees talking, because we're nominated in 12 categories. Aren't you on the nominating committee?
I am, but I, last time when I was on it, if we had, like, for the teachers and administrators and those type of things...
They let you stay?
Yeah.
Okay. That was different than the conversation, so I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I thought that, because John asked about that. So, maybe double-check with Wade.
Okay.
Just to see. And then, last night, we had a teleconference call to the Joint Board and the Executive Committee to talk about how we were going to go ahead and hire a new executive director. As you all know, Dottie's still leaving. Keep hoping she's going to say, "Oh, I changed my mind," but she hasn't yet. And she didn't even go to Chicago with me, so that was a definite sign. So, I got information from the National School Board Association when I was there. And Dottie got a proposal from the executive search consultant from the Oregon School Board Association. And last night, that was voted on, and they've decided to go with the executive search consultant, which will be around $10,000 by the time we get done cost. But it'll relieve a lot of pressure from board members, which is good for me, because my husband's missed me a lot, so he would hate for me to have any more responsibilities there. But we should have that put together for the September 28th and 29th meeting, so we'll have a better idea of the timetable and how we're getting out the word and so on and so forth there. And I think that's, and then, if you didn't get it, Dottie sent out the conference schedule. Look it over. It's got some great, great speakers. I talked to Amanda Beard while I was in Chicago, and she's all excited about coming. She's been working on her stuff. And so have a couple of the other speakers. So, just to let you know, that's about it. Thank you.
I'll just have a quick update for the board. I met with, well, in fact, yesterday, I met with Lee Conley at Eagle Valley, Dan Sadler at Carson Middle School. And we talked about the social-emotional learning going forward, starting the new year. And we talked about the learning guides and the importance of the learning guides. And, you know, we all got SBAQ scores. We're not quite there yet. And so, we had a good talk about, are they universally used? I can ask a couple of students right now on the learning guides. Don't get nervous. But it is. You know, and it's, you know, we talked about how they link in with the learner-centered model. And I'll have some more comments when we get to our, you know, how we're going to measure progress of students and where they fit in and how important they are going forward. In addition, on the social-emotional learning front, with partnership Carson City, which I'm a board member there also, what used to be the one-up club at Carson High is now not only in Carson High, but it's in both of the middle schools. And their objectives are to address an peer-to-peer basis of issues affecting their peers or students. And it's interesting, Carson High, the issue that the students picked was drug issues, how to get the word out to students. Not a perfect world, but, you know, the seriousness of things that we're in. And Eagle Valley has been yet to determine. But what's interesting is Carson Middle School, first year, I think, 50-plus students that want to help. The issues that they chose in a peer-to-peer way was kindness, which relate to bullying, but the kindness issue and then suicide prevention that they picked. And that's based upon a lot of their experiences with the signs of suicide program that was offered last year, in which out of 912 students, there were 112 that wanted some additional information. They're beginning to talk about the issue and help each other. So, and it's not, you know, it's to be recognized. So, anyway, that's my report. Agenda item number five. We have association reports. Brian? No, I see the heads of no. Agenda item number six, public comment. Anyone would like to, just to come forward and speak on any issue regarding the school district that is not on the agenda, just feel free to come forward. And, whoop, we do have one. Okay, just give us your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is James McDuffie. So, I'm a parent of three students in the Carson School District. So, my oldest is 14 in the high school this year. And my middle one is in fifth grade, he's nine, and my youngest just started kindergarten. So, some of my concerns right now is, we live right across the street on King Street from Bordowick. You know, if you've ever seen that house with the white dormers that's literally staring at the playground, that's my house. And, you know, all three of my kids have gone through Bordowick now. My youngest is now starting. And this year is kind of an odd drop-off. So, they have this single-point-of-entry idea, which doesn't seem a single point, since, like, all four major doors of the school have the kids going in and out of them the entire morning, you know? And the interesting thing is, you're asking us as parents to drop our kids off at the front door instead of dropping off the kids with the teachers. And so, we're dropping them off at the front door, the kids have to make their way through the bowels of the school, which, if you've ever been in the backside of Bordowick, going through the cafeteria and down to the kindergarten room isn't like the simplest thing. But we're asking, you know, five-year-olds and four-year-olds who are about to be five to kind of make that journey on their own. And it just seems overly complicated for young children to do that. The way we've been doing it since my oldest was at Bordowick is, you literally dropped them off at the kindergarten playground, and the teachers would meet them right there. You could say goodbye to them through the fence, you know? You could have your little moment with your kid in the morning, rather than dropping them off at the door and being kind of blocked out, so you can't see your kids. And half the parents already are walking around the entire building, so they can see their kids inside of the actual play area. So, you know, myself and several other parents just seem to think that the new process is tedious, doesn't necessarily seem any safer than any of the previous processes. And so, I just want to bring it up as a consistent parental concern for myself and many other parents.
Well, thank you for your concern. And maybe you can get together with our superintendent, Richard Stokes, just to, yeah, address some of the mechanics here, because the issue is safety. And if we're not meeting that safety issue, then we need to know that.
Sure.
Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven. Discussion of proposed changes to CCSC Policy 513, reporting pupil progress. And it's first reading, and Sue?
Susan Kima for the record. The content of Policy 513, reporting pupil progress, has been, has not been addressed since 1979. Revisions mirror current thinking and language from our strategic plan and the learner-centered model. And as, just for the record, policies are expected to represent the vision of the board, and then regulations will spell out the details. And we will have the details of this particular policy in the next agenda item, number eight. So, most of, most of the policy is about modernizing the language. Do we have any questions about the policy?
Comments from the board?
Sure, I just have a couple on the first. And I didn't look up our more recently revised policies, but I'm thinking that we've introduced and said the Board of Trustees. So, just to be consistent, if that's what we're, rather than just the board, to just, maybe we even said the Carson City School District Board of Trustees. Just, and then you could use board throughout, but just to be consistent with that. And then, the first sentence, I'm wondering if there's an extra "and" after meaningful, or if that's, or if the "and" and "serve" goes with the grades, that the grades are accurate, consistent, meaningful, and supportive of students, and that grades serve as a link between home and school? Or do we need the "and" before "supportive"? I, just that sentence needed a little reworking for me.
It's a vision of the Carson City School District that grades are accurate, consistent, meaningful, supportive of student learning, and serve as a link between home and the school. Okay.
Other questions, comments? You know, I do have, you know, at least one, that when you use the term mastery, mastery of standard or learning, of standard or learning targets, that, just for our sake and for the sake of anyone else in the world, maybe we could have that definition of mastery upfront of what that means, in parents or whatever it is. What does mastery mean?
Sure.
I know you've got it, and the regulation is buried in the last page, and I'm going, gee.
Bring it to the fore.
Can we bring it to the, yeah, to the front?
Sure.
And then, you know, as I read through the policy and the regu, well, we get the regulations, I'm still concerned about the learning guides, which is mastery of a standard. It should be a continuing with a learning guide, which is trying to get students involved and teachers involved or engaged to help students, you know, learn, you know, learn the mastery of a subject or the standards. And somehow, I think, you know, based upon my conversations, we got, we have these learning guides on a standalone area, and they're probably a little bit more important than what many think. So, I don't know if it would fit in this policy or not, but maybe you could look at that as, you know, including that, to give it a little bit more importance to many of us.
So, absolutely, absolutely, we can.
One more question I have. The second-to-last paragraph, that grades are cumulative and reflective of student learning, the end of the sentence, as well as new learning within the credit borrowing term? I don't, I'm not familiar with that phrase. To me, it seems like it would be credit earning or credit awarding?
Bearing.
Bearing. Oh, okay. Credit bearing.
We can, we can look at that to see if there's a better, as well as new learning within the credit bearing term. But we could, we could look at that, too, if there's a more common, more clear.
Any other questions, comments? And first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. You know, it has been some time, and I think it, but serves as a way of starting to bring things together. One more? Okay, go ahead.
Sue, just one more, just for consideration, just the very first sentence. We say that the school district, that grades are accurate, consistent, meaningful, et cetera. I'd like to add timely. It isn't a big issue, but every so often, you have situations where the grades aren't in quick enough, and sometimes it impacts a student's ability to understand how they did before they do the next, you know, the next session, if you will.
Sure. We'll take a look at that here and maybe, again, in the regulation.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's consistency.
Questions, comments, questions? Okay, go right ahead to the regulation.
Okay. Very much, Susan Kima, again, for the record. Regulation, this regulation is providing you the details of current practice. Sometimes, sometimes, policy and regulations are determined, and then actions start afterwards. And in other cases, as years and time and events evolve, things change, and then we need to make sure that the policy and regulation catch up or represent accurately what's actually going on in the district. And this regulation's a little bit of both. Again, language matters. The more aligned the language we, the more aligned language we use that describes the student achievement levels, the more the stakeholders will understand that Carson City School District's approach of being learner, learning-centered. We wanted to make sure that when the public read this, or our employees read this regulation, it not only spelled out the expectations, but also represented our current culture and the culture we're continuing to strive for. So, if you look at the regulation, the first paragraph, just like in the old regulation, communicates students' progress, talks about the expectations of communicating students' progress towards the mastery of standards or learning targets to our parents and our guardians. So, we started... We wanted to make sure that when the public read this, or our employees read this regulation, it not only spelled out the expectations, but also represented our current culture and the culture we're continuing to strive for. So if you look at the regulation, the first paragraph, just like in the old regulation, communicates students' progress, talks about the expectations of communicating students' progress towards the mastery of standards or learning targets to our parents and our guardians. So we started off the, the new language, the new model, with the same way we did the old, but with more pertinent language, or more relevant language to our learner-centered model. Then we talked about some of the things that I just want to make sure the Board knows what changed and what didn't change. For the secondary level, the grades are issued at the end of each semester. That's when students earn credit. So on the second quarter, or second quarter, which is the end of the first semester, and on the fourth quarter at the end of the second semester, that's when the final grades are issued, that's when the credit is issued. First and third quarter are actually progress reports. None of that changed. That's the way we've been doing it in the secondary level, and none of that's changed. And then the, the expectation is that if students aren't doing well before the end of the first nine weeks, that parents are being communicated with. Now, we have MIUs, our measurable units of instruction. For the secondary, sometimes they can run anywhere from two weeks to five weeks. So that doesn't, doesn't say that a teacher after an instructional unit couldn't report right at that point, after the first two weeks, or if it's five weeks after they're done an instructional unit. That doesn't mean that they couldn't report that out at that time. For the elementary, the grading period actually ends at the end of the year. It's a great, year-long grading period. Elementary students don't receive credit, but they have an indication of meeting the standards by their grade promotion at the end of the year. So what's really new is that our quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, they're really progress reports to the students making mastery on the standards expected for that grade level, with the final grade being in the fourth quarter. Benny? Go ahead.
Just, okay. Looking at the regulation, let's, let's go down to one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, sixth paragraph. Let's go to that first sentence. The parents or guardians of students in the secondary, grade six to 12, will receive a progress report midway through the first nine weeks of instruction if his or her student is failing. Midway through the first nine weeks. Our, our learning guides are in three-week units.
They can be anywhere from two weeks to five weeks. Now, in the middles, that's the, more like the secondary, how they could range. Now, with the elementary, they could range anywhere from maybe three weeks to two weeks. But for the secondary, you tend to get about two measurable units of instruction in each quarter. But for the elementary, you could get three. You could get maybe a few more than that. So they're shorter. What I want to say is they're shorter for the elementary generally, but for the middle school, they can, and the high school, they can range anywhere from two to five weeks.
Well, you know, if a student is, is struggling, and we're going back, and you mentioned the learner-centered model, in our report to the, to parents or guardians, do we also let them know that they're, not only they're, they're having difficulties, but we should have a support group that's working with the, their student? So, I mean, do we mention, how does this all fit together?
So what's coming up, there's more to fit with this. What's coming up during parent-teacher conferences in October, well, let's back up. We, we, August 16th, we had a elementary district-wide training on the grade book, which is now, students will be keeping their grades in Infinite Campus, just like middle school and high school folks. And also, we were having, we're having the teachers at this time setting up their trackers for Mastery Connect. During parent-teacher conference time in October, we're going to be able to have the teachers show the parents how they can get into Mastery Connect, so that they can check their child's grade on a regular basis, okay? Or their child's progress, we should say. So as far as the reciprocal responsibility, the parents have the right and the responsibility of inquiring about how their children are doing, checking that PG on a regular, on the weekly basis, as well as now we're opening up, opening up the electronic accesses that our middle school and high schools have been afforded later on in the semester. But as far as the teacher is concerned, the expectation is, if they start to see that the student is not doing well, they should be communicating with the family. So if there's something with the nine weeks, if we don't want to make sure that they don't wait till the first quarter, we want to make sure that it's clear that they need to communicate with the families before the first report card or the first progress report comes out, I should say. So maybe what we should do, Mr. Swirzick, is kind of go back and relook at that to make sure we're communicating that clearly.
Yeah, I would. I think it's important, if we're gonna, yeah, keep on the learner-centered approach, because it ties back into the learning guides that the teachers get to look at, and somehow they become co-teachers, and it all kind of fits together. And I know the elementary is still working on this, but...
And what we don't want is somebody communicating with the family on the eighth week, and then they get the report, progress report on the ninth week, and it's very hard for the student to have rectified anything. So I think there, there's maybe some clarity in the expectations.
And then would, go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Swirzick. I was just going to mention that during any grading period, there are a number of formative grades that can be placed into a grade book or into a student information system. So it may not just be the one score from like one measurable instructional unit. So there could be a variety of things that actually add to where, you know, to a numerical designation, whether or not the student is passing or failing. And so, so I think it can be more information there besides just what might be represented by a, an MIU.
Last comment, would you, the definition of the word mastery is on the second page. Will you bring it up to the front somewhere?
You bet.
Okay. First, and then Ryan?
Okay. Just a comment, you have the extra "and" in that sentence, that's the same sentence as the policy, meaningful and supportive and serve, so just delete that "and". And then I have a question on the grades for elementary school with the mastery of standards approaching and in need of remediation. Since the report card and the whole credit earning period is the entire school year, I guess my concern is, I've heard different counties where the grades at the beginning of the year for elementary school are lower because they haven't mastered the entire year yet. And I just have a concern is, when they do get their progress reports in elementary school at each quarter, will it be on mastery of those standards that they've learned that quarter, or is it going to be basing it on the whole year? Because no one would get above a two, I would think.
It would be based on the standards that have been taught and assessed.
Okay, okay. And then I guess, it's just a comment that I have on, on elementary school, because I've experienced it with my own kids. Is the grading by three, two, one required by the Department of Education, or is that something that we're doing, and we're not doing any of the percentage grading at elementary levels?
So to answer the first part of the question, this is a district-based grading system. The state does have, so I do have a few corrections on my own on the last page. If you look at the high school nine through 12 grading system, or grading scale, that is embedded in law. And so I would suggest that the last time that this regulation was updated was probably when the Nevada Department of Ed went to a statewide grading scale for high school. And so I do want to make sure I put the NRS when we come back for the second, when I, when I make some changes in this, I want to make sure I put the, the NRS that corresponds to that in here. Then for the middle school, and then to the second, for the second question is, so the first question to answer is, the only state-mandated scoring system is with the high school, the scale. The second question was, could you say that?
Just, just kind of a comment that I've had, because I noticed it with my kids as they were going into middle school, they, they literally didn't know what an A was. They didn't know what a 90% was. And I'm wondering if there wouldn't be some way, maybe for fourth and fifth grade, to start introducing that percentage grading so that they are a little bit more prepared for middle school. I, I remember the pediatrician asking my kids, what kind of grade do you get? And they were like, we get Es. And they, because that's their PG grade. They had no idea what an A was or what a B, and remind, and, and trying to get them to understand every assignment is important to turn in, because, and, and they were like, oh, well, 80's good, that's a, that's going to get me a three. And I'm like, eh, it doesn't work that way. So I, I just, if that's something that we can consider adding in, I don't know if that adds too much extra work, but it seems like that would help prepare. I, I'm guessing my kids are not the only kids that have had that same experience going into middle school.
You know, might I suggest that that's a really good point to, to address during our transition period. There's, there's times in that fifth grade where we work on transition activities, we tour the middle school, we, we sign up for classes, and there may be some practice things that the teachers could do, keeping the integrity of our own grading scale, but showing the students the differences and what they're about to embark upon. So there, I think there's, I think your point, we'll kind of take a look at that and see where we, we could, I think that's a valid point, to make sure that our students understand their grades. That's part of the learner-centered model, that they understand how well they're doing on the standards, and that they can articulate their achievement level, no matter what the scale is. But then also going to the middle school, it is different, and making sure that they understand that before they get there, and then maybe making sure that the sixth-grade teachers help them understand that, too, when they arrive, in case they didn't come from our system, and it came from a different system where there were other Es. Okay? The middle school, too, the, I need to point out, the difference there is that the mine, that we took this opportunity to collaborate with the middle school, thinking about our college and career alignment in our systems, is we took this opportunity to collaborate with the middle school and changed the grading scale for the middle school to match the high schools. So there are no pluses and minuses anymore at the middle school. It'll be, the middle school grading scale will mirror the high school grading scale.
Ryan?
Sue?
Yeah, I, similar to Mr. Swirzick, so I won't delve into that. I guess I'll go straight into the suggestion. I think you'd appreciate it as a parent, and I think you're understanding the concern from what you said. But I, when I had read that, I thought, well, why are we even waiting till failing? You know, as a parent, I want to know. And actually, as a parent, and I think most teachers, maybe not at the beginning of school, but once there's been some, some weeks under their belts, they, they know a level that the child should be learning at. If they're starting to, something's happening, maybe outside of school or whatever, you know, that's when I, my expectation is that at least something goes out that says, hey, is everything okay? You know, and so, and I don't know, you're a much better wordsmith than me, I'm sure you could capture that in here, but just something that says our expectation is that it is learner-centered, that you are paying attention to the pupil, and substandard for that child is, is probably time to make a phone call or an intervention, not at failure.
Thank you for the reinforcement.
Joe?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Ron. So two questions for you. On the elementary, just thinking back, because I remember asking this question when my kids were in elementary school. One, two, and three. Two, they're approaching mastery of standards, so they're, they're mastering, they're, they're doing well if they have a two, is what this grading is saying?
So they, this, in a standards-based system, typically three means they're proficient. They get it, they've got it, we can, we can move on. Number two, they're getting close. They might, think about this as a bicycle. If you're a three, you're riding the bicycle without training wheels. If you're a two, you're riding that bicycle but with training wheels. Or it's not consistent, you're not, if I give you the same problem to solve today or a problem like that using the same strategies, you might get it today, but you're not, and you might get it tomorrow but not the next day. You don't have it every time, right? You're, you're, you're getting there, but you, you need help, you need assistance. And a number, and a one means that we need to look at some more interventions, you're just, you're, it's still, you're still not quite getting, even grasping the concepts yet. And we're trying to, to help, help you get to the level two with the training wheels. It's like, it's not, it's like the student's on the bike, and I'm taking that bike and walking the bike around with the student on it, but I'm doing all the work, okay?
And so I guess, kind of piggybacking on Trustee Green was saying, if I'm a parent and my kid gets a two, I'm not exactly sure, I understand your analogy, but I'm not exactly sure.
How they should take it.
You know, what that range is, should I be worried that they're, you know, are they closer to a one or a three, kind of thing?
Sure, sure.
You know? I'm curious if, if two is kind of that catch-all, too-big-of-a-range.
Well, if, if the student is meeting, if they've got it, they're going to be a three. And maybe talking with, making sure that our communication with the parents indicates that the standards are required to be mastered by the end of the year. So for some of these difficult standards that are going to be, now I say rotated, but spiraled throughout each quarter. It's picked up this way in math this time, and then it's picked up in math a different way. And the expectation is, it's not supposed to be, it may not be mastered by two. You know, if there are two already in the fourth quarter, and a lot of kids are still at a one, because they didn't quite, that is just a big concept. Like right now, in middle school, with the materials that we have adopted, the rigor is much higher than what they were used to. And they're already looking at, these kids aren't there yet because we haven't done that work at the elementary level. But they will get there. And, and the expectation is, that's why we bought those materials, is so that these kids and the teachers rise to the occasion. So I guess I'm going a long way around it, in that is, when the standards are expected to be mastered by the end of the year, if there are two in the fourth quarter, that might mean something different than if there are two in the first quarter.
Sure. Okay.
Just communicating with what the expectation is with the standard, where the expectation is with that content area, and what's been introduced.
And then my second question, and I asked this question a few years back at the high school level, and I'm glad you mentioned that, but the state adopted, you know, the, the percentage grades, A through F, and Nevada doesn't do the minuses.
Correct.
Like some states do.
Correct.
Have we had conversations?
About that?
Districts, how, whether or not that puts us at a disadvantage with other states when their, say, seniors are applying to colleges? Because if you have an 84%, you have a 3.0.
They don't look at the pluses and minuses, they drop that. When you go work with colleges, they don't look at the, for, when you talk, our counselors were concerned about that, especially at the very beginning of this, because our high school used to have pluses and minuses. And that was a really big concern about that advantage piece. But with Dr. Medina, working at U and R, working at different universities, having contacts with different universities, doing the research, they don't look at the plus or minus. Did you get the A? Did you get the score? They don't look at the, they don't look at the plus or minus, because it means different things in different states.
Well, see, I found, and I haven't looked at it recently, but a few years back, some still were. I know when I talk to family members and friends from other states, some still did. And I was just curious, I mean, if, if it's across the board, I just want to make sure, you know, as a district and as a state, we're advocating for our students so that they're competing on a level playing field with other states.
Absolutely, absolutely, always looking at that.
And just one more question, back on the elementary school. So just using the bike analogy, I mean, there are some kids, and I see that we're taking away the four that exceed standards. And I guess my concern with that is, there are some kids who have mastered the math concepts for first grade, and they're working and doing advanced work already. And, and having had a second grader explain to me, well, what does it matter if I do this, I'm still going to get a three. Is that the best thing, to not have that four available for some kids who are doing advanced work, who, who maybe are not only riding a bike without training wheels, but they're, they're on a unicycle?
Wheelies.
Yeah, they're doing wheelies, and they've taken it off some jumps. Like, can they get that? I, I get that you don't want to overgive fours, and, and that they're still based on the standards that they're getting that grade, but what if they are reading a full grade level or two levels ahead of where they're at? They, they have met all the standards, and they are exceeding them. So I guess, I, I guess I just kind of worry about that with wanting to make sure that kids strive to do their best, and strive to exceed expectations as well as, as meet the requirements. and strive to exceed expectations as well as, as meet, as meet the requirements. So I'm not sure, I, I don't know, just, I have concerns.
It's kind of like when we made algebra, it was two classes, and then we made it one. And that rigor made those kids step up. So it's kind of like, if you have it stopping at three, and you don't have something for these other people, will they strive and will do the rigor?
So there's always work to do in our system, but a guru of grading, a guru that's well-respected, I would say, nationwide and internationally on grading, is Thomas Guske. And he's a professor of educational psychology at the University of Kentucky. And there's some, some considerations for the board about this four. Based on his research, that, that there are four levels of performance is the most common. It is the most common. Most educators feel, the second point is, most educators feel that a scale of one, two, three isn't enough to differentiate the differences between student performance, which you're bringing up, okay? The third piece is that any grading scale that has more than a, like a five or a six, then you're starting to dilute these definitions, and nobody knows what they mean. And that was happening with us with the four. So some people will look at the four, you know, and we know like the three means you made it, you did it, you got it. A two means you're going there, but you need some support. A three, or a one means, uh, more like we're struggling, needs improvement, and maybe there needs to be some interventions to get you to cross, kind of start on that forward progress. The challenge is divi, is defining that four. That seems to be a very difficult thing for districts to do, and for teachers and, um, to come together. You'll have some people who will look at that four as a truly exceptional, um, mark of achievement. It's something that a student did that just knocked your socks off, you know? And, um, I have Jeremy Lewis here with me, who's done a lot of work on this, and he's probably got examples for all of this. So if we have questions, he can, he could come on up. But it's, it's something special that's related to the standards that the student does, that they give them that four. Then somebody else will use that four to say, but they did something above and beyond the standards. They went above the standards. They, they did something truly exceptional that was actually more complicated and deeper and way above that standard. So while we're talking, like, I get it, why wouldn't we do the four? Wouldn't we, why wouldn't we give the four? It's common sense. Nationwide, um, parents say that that four is vague, that when it, it's, when you're in parent conferences, it starts to break down with the teachers across the nation in that description of what that four means. Teachers can be a tight group. We've got 3,400 students that we have to communicate this with. We have their parents that are attached to them, and their guardians and families. And we have, we have a large number of teachers in this district that have to come together and understand. When I ask the teachers, they know that a three means they got the target, they hit the target, they got it. When they talk to parents, or we're talking to the teachers, they can explain the two. They can explain the two that, hey, the student is going to get it, I can see him getting it, they're just not quite there. And the one, they know they need some more additional help. But when we get to the four, in our district, we were handing them out like Halloween candy. Our definitions were widespread. And when you're thinking about aligning our systems, right, when we're giving out more fours, but our students are scoring, I know there's always going to be arbitrary pieces with grading, but our students are scoring mostly in the two range on the S-bag. We're far apart of what we're telling the kids is going on by day, and what they're actually getting in the outcome results of our assessments. They're never going to be perfectly aligned. So when you think about some of the things that you mentioned about these students that are reading above grade level, that's a different target, that's a different standard. When you think about the Olympic, think about the Olympic, um, archer. They're in the Olympics, they're 70 feet away from the target, they hit the bullseye. It's a three, they made it, they did it. That's the target, that's the standard. Now, if we want to add the four to them, we could say, we'll back up the, we'll back the, we'll back them up to 80 feet, or we'll make the target even smaller. But that's a different standard. So I think there's work to be done for some of these kids that are way in advance, but we needed to kind of level the playing field on what we're saying to people, and the messaging that's aligned with, um, the Mastery Connect, red, green, and yellow, one, two, three, people get it. Um, we need to simple, we needed to break it way down and simplify things for people so that we can have some consistent communication across this district. So do we need to maybe discuss different things down the road? Once we get this, once we get people going on that, maybe there's an opening for that. But right now, people don't quite understand, you know, you can still get a three on a target for a student that's working at two grade levels above, because it's a different target. The question you probably has is, but they're doing it in first grade, and it's third grade reading, and they're doing it in fifth grade when it's eighth grade reading. That's maybe where some more discussion can, can, can pursue. But we got to remember that when we think kids are doing different things, the target was only to ride the bike, not to do jumps, not to do wheelies. That's a different standard, then you grade accordingly to that. So, um, the, I, there's a real common sense kind of article around this that might help all of us. I, I, Mr. Lewis shared it with me, and I thought, you know, that's a, that's a layman's kind of conversation around that grading in the four that I think might be something that I'm going to, is something I'm going to share with our principals and our teachers, just to help them with their talking points, so that we're very clear this act, well, this year, it's the first week in November for our fall parent conferences, when we're talking to parents, and we're putting out communication around grading.
Okay, so we keep this all coming together. In the executive summary, you referred to the learner-centered model philosophy. I would suggest we put it in these, this policy and regulation with a definition. We're not going to lose this, um, because it's important. Learner-centered model means students get help when they need it, not at the end of the year when they say you're failed, and, you know, there's no way to catch up. Our whole approach was something a little bit different. And in this whole grading scheme would be to identify these students. That might be 70% of our students in some subject need help, and we, we've got that approach now. We know the top 20% of our students, probably in this school and any school, probably are independent learners and don't need much help. They're there, and then when you go to one, two, three, I mean, they certainly, they'd be in the fours. I, and we'll have that discussion later, you know, how we identify those that are exceptional. They've met the standards, but they want more. How do we recognize that? And amongst all of the, the grading or assessment of student progress. But for purposes of tonight, if you will, just put in that learner. So, parents or anyone reading this will say, well, what is it? What does it mean, and how does it affect my student? And then I have one other minor, um, uh, change, and that is the last paragraph, it says, appeal of any grade should begin with, with the teacher. Then, you know, where it says, building administrator, why don't we put school? I mean, we might have more than one building in a school.
Okay.
Uh, it just seems, it's minor, but, yeah, just. Uh, any more, Ryan?
Yeah, I guess to go back down the elementary wormhole. I ran this by a couple of friends, and, uh, it was fairly unanimous. The, their initial interpretation was that everybody gets a medal now. And I, and I completely understand what you're saying about having too many categories or not having understandable categories. And this is definitely a simplification, but I think like Mr. Cassiopeus said, that, that two range is, could be really broad, and, and three obviously doesn't maybe touch, um, like it, there's, there's no incentive built into the system. Or for the, we've taken out any, any reason to, I guess, strive, because once you're at a three, you're a three. And then a two, how do you know how close you are? So, I don't know, and maybe some of this is just hard to change for those of us who all grew up with A, Bs, and Ds. But I, I got a feeling that we're going to have a bunch of parents that are just like, huh. So, I don't know, maybe, you know, it's one thing, you talk about how you're going to have to educate the educators, but we got to educate the parents on this too. So, maybe that should be, I mean, I'm sure there's some gurus out there, but we're just plain people here. The, um, I don't know, I don't, it, it's weird to me, to be honest with you, so.
So students can, people can find out how close they are to the three, or how close they are to the one, when we get them into the, to the Mastery Connect system, so that they can see their, um, see their gra, see their, see their work. And, um, and this system we were using all of last year with our reporting system. So this is part of that, catching up the regulation and the policy.
And just, I would echo, I've heard it as early as the beginning of second grade. Why? I'm still going to get a three. And, and they, the kids have figured out, well, this is good enough to get a three, and, and sometimes they don't finish more. And, and, you know, that's, that's something that concerns me, that we're maybe, make, that that's okay, that they're developing that, um, idea about things.
There is incentive, right? The incentive is the gate.
Just like, don't fight yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is James McDuffie. I mean, there is incentive, the incentive is the gate program. And both of my older kids, at one point, were in the gate program. So it's not, can I get a three? It's, if you get a three, we identify you with the test on whether you're ready to go to an exceptional group of people, and work harder, and have more challenge and more opportunities put into your place. And that's the gate program. So, I mean, if we want to emphasize more, instead of a ambiguous four, that kids should strive to be a part of the gate program instead, and we have twice as many students in the gate program as any other school district, then I think that would be a worthy strive, rather than just trying to have an ambiguous four. Because as a parent, my wife and I several times see a four on the report card, you're like, well, what does that mean? Is that an A? Is that a B? Like, it, the four was useless. And then when the next year, my son came home with all threes, we were like, well, are you getting Bs now? Like, I don't understand with, why we, you were getting fours last year, and now this year you're only getting threes, and that was never accurately communicated to the parents. But her explanation makes perfect sense to me, and if that is communicated correctly to the parents, and the trophy of joining the gate program, like, my oldest son was in the gate program all the way through elementary and middle school. You know, I think that's a worthy goal, and that's not just handing someone a trophy. You have to earn being in the gate program, so that's just.
But, but just to be clear, not everybody gets into the gate program, even if they're exceptional. You, you can, you can hit every assignment out of the park and not qualify for gate. So not every high-achieving student gets into gate.
Well, then would it make sense to expand the gate program to make it more available to those kids?
It's not based on grades, it's based on a variety of different things that Valerie Doherty could explain much better, but a large part of it is the IQ and the learning process. So you have high-achieving students who learn, and, and as a parent of gate, I have a gate and a high-achieving student, so I can see the difference between the two. But high-achieving students still earn As and still go above and beyond. It's just that they are taught more like regular kids, where it takes two to three times to explain it. A gate kid usually understands it before you start explaining it, and they've gone steps beyond, and they actually learn differently. And so that's what the gate program is, is designed to do. So this, to me, the gate, the gate program in, in my mind is not a reward for high achievement. It is a way of teaching students who learn differently, and, and often that is an accelerated pace that they learn at. But I, I, I just, I, I guess my concern with this is the high achievers, that the kids that are, that are working really hard and, and doing that, and, and then oftentimes your gate kids who get it quickly get lazy. Um, and then you've got that problem with them. So, um, just, just, I just wanted to distinguish, but I, I appreciate that. At my kid's school, we, fours have been rare for quite a while, so we haven't seen, um, we've, we'd been told they weren't allowed to give out fours. And so.
Except on peachies, because those are okay.
You know, those are, those are letter grades, of E, X, Es and Ss and other things. But, um, anyway, it just, um, it just concerns me, is, is that. But, and I just wanted to distinguish between the, the gate that way.
Okay, now, any more questions from, and I know Jeremy wants to say something, you know?
I, I need to make a correction of myself first. When I said that we're opening up Mastery Connect in November for the parent conferences, it's not Mastery Connect. Students will have, they have access from, to that from day one. Parents have, uh, teachers have access to that, so they can check their grades. But are there, where they're, where they're, where they're standing as far as their measures, measure of instructional units? And it's getting late for me. But it's the Infinite Campus Parent Portal that we're opening up in November. So then we'll open that at K-12. So I just want to make sure, for the teachers that are out there listening, I didn't freak anybody out, and for, um, our parents, they know that, you know, they, who have been questioning, why don't you have that open for our elementary folks like some other districts do, and that sort of thing, that'll be coming down the pike. That will also help that transfer, that transparency and the communication between home and school.
Jeremy, you, I'm sure you want to add something to this.
Jeremy Lewis. Yeah, just to address Mr. Green and Mr. Swerzik, so you were talking about incentive, right? And Mr. Swerzik, you, you keep going back to the learner-centered approach. And in the sort of traditional system of grading, we're using terms like exceptional, or average, or above average. That's a comparative way of grading. It's not a, like, criterion-based way of grading. So if we look at the learner-centered system, or a learner-centered approach to grading, it's based on criteria, not me comparing myself to other students. I think that's a big, important distinction, and that's where the elementary is going, that those ones, twos, and threes, that's, that's set criteria. And so my incentive now is intrinsic incentive. I need to reach that level, as opposed to an extrinsic incentive where I'm competing against my fellow students. So I'm not, I don't want to be above average, I want to achieve the goal of mastery of that particular standard. So it's a shift in thinking, I think, from that mindset of what I would call an older way of grading, or quite frankly, archaic way of grading, that's comparative-based. I think that's an important distinction to make, that was my.
And, and I think it is important, and I understand what you're saying. And I think we're going to have that conversation for a long time coming, because we're doing it this way, and then eventually the kids are going to get into a situation, applying to college, when you are competing against everybody. So at some point, you're coming back to the archaic way of comparing yourself to everybody else. But in the meantime, like Trustee Green said, arguably, everybody's getting a trophy. You know, and so we just have to be careful, and I think just keep having that conversation of what is best, and reevaluating it all the time. But I think we're going to, that pendulum's going to shift eventually again, but.
Possibly.
You know, I don't know, but I think it will.
It, it tends to swing back and forth. But I do, I do think that, like, right now, the students earning threes on their report card are not necessarily earning threes on the S-bag. So there's a disconnect between, between student, reported student performance in classrooms or in courses, and their performance on state assessments. If a three was a three in both those scenarios, we'd be having a different conversation right now, but it's not. So I think our goal is to make sure that we have clear criteria for what is a one on this standard, what is a two on this standard, and what is a three on this standard. And then it's not handing them out like candy, because there's very clear definitions for ones, twos, and threes. And when you have a small scale like that, you actually can have a, um, a narrower range, as opposed to a broader range. A three, I mean, a two has a narrower range of definitions to it than does a B, which is 10 points, 80 to 89%. What's the difference between an 88, and an 87, and an 86, and an 85 versus what's a two? So there's a couple of things that have to happen here. One is clarifying our, our rubrics and what a standard is, making sure that's clear, making sure teachers are teaching to that, and then students are earning the grades that they deserve.
Any other questions, comments, any other, uh, comments from our, please come forward. Just identify yourself for the record.
Loretta Marsen, Kinder Para. Um, I just had a question because it did come up last year. And I'm kindergarten, of course, and so quarterly. And I know in the past, we had benchmarks for each quarter. I'm not sure if that's called benchmarks or what it is. So, the first quarter, like you said, we have one, twos and threes. So, you have a child, you don't have lots of them, but you have a child who's higher. And that kid has mastered, I guess it called mastered, that first quarter of standards for that time of year. But because we're still looking at the whole school year for the fourth quarter, that child may only get a two. Then we go to the second quarter. He's got his benchmarks or whatever you wanna call it. He's passed those again. Okay? He's only getting a two. Third quarter, same. Fourth quarter, then maybe he gets a three from what I understand because now he's mastered his whole kindergarten grade. But those quarters is where you're not seeing, and that's where you'd have to tell their parents, he's not there yet, not there yet at the end of kindergarten or not at the, yet at the quarter. So, that was kind of a question last year when parents were asking that at the, um, parent conferences. Well, what does that really mean? And, and so, you know, you're praising the child. Yes, that child, you know, he's doing, he's, he's just doing wonderful, but he can only have a two at this point. So, that was my question. Do we do the one, twos and threes per quarter or is it at the end of the grade? That was my clarification because, you know, whether it's a three, four, two, whatever your system you have, if that kid is meeting that quarter standard or strand, whatever you, then that child should be given a, you know, a higher.
I think that's a good question to clarify and make sure our teachers know because I have, my sister's kids in Washoe County, she had it explained to them, to her that, and, and I know this is a different county, but they, they said, we have to show growth. And so, they were giving kids lower grades at the beginning because they hadn't mastered all of, of the things at the end. And so, I hope our teachers are instructed, if I understood you correctly, Mrs. Kima, it was based on the mastery of the things each quarter. Is that correct?
And I'm, I'm not sure if all teachers understand that, so they might've gotten different information. But that was what happened is at my site, you know, the teacher was like, oh. And then she had to explain to the parent, no, he can only have a two because he hasn't mastered everything at the end of kindergarten. So, just that was my clarification. And, and, and parents, when they look at the report card, kindergarten all the way to fifth grade is the same report card. There is no differentiation. So, nothing against the report card, but it is kind of hard to understand and explain, especially at my site, um, higher ESL population. It's, it's not a friendly, uh, report card, but that's another issue, I guess. Anyway, that was my clarification, so I'm out of here.
That's a good one. Thank you. Jeremy, you have something you wanna add?
Well, I can, I can answer the question. How's that? Um, so, last year and all previous years, the elementary was divided by quarters. There was four terms, four terms in the year, which means in our infinite campus, our SIS system, there were four separate terms. So, we actually posted a grade for elementary four times, quarter one, two, three and four. That has now changed to a single term. There's only one term for elementary now. There are not four terms. So, it's technically not quarters. What would be the first quarter, second quarter and third quarter, what is in teachers' grade books is pulled out as a progress report. So, that's the first big change. And it's, it's a really big deal for teachers because in infinite campus, their grade books relate to their terms. If you have two terms, you have two sets of grade books. If you have four terms, you have four. If you have one, you have one. So, elementary teachers have to put in a lot of grades because it's by strand or by domain. So, if you can imagine, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, lot of work for them. So, if you had four sets of those, it would be a lot. It's also difficult to give students credit for new learning in the fourth quarter if your first quarter grade book is closed. So, that's the first part. The second part is the decision about what to report. And the decision from the team, which was the principals and the vice principals and STEM coaches and everybody, was that we should report what students have been assessed on and taught to date. So, if I earn threes in, in the first quarter, then I'm gonna get, that first progress report's gonna show threes. Not, because if I show a two, I'm assuming that the kid's not gonna get it for some reason, which I think is unfair to the child, right? So, that, those progress reports are based on where that student is at that moment. It's the student's present level of performance at that time. If it's a three, it's a three. If it's a two, it's a two. If it's a one, it's a one. So, it is reported that way. There was a lot of questions and ambiguity last year, and that's part of this, cleaning that up. The other big difference is that teachers didn't necessarily assess and call their grades the same way. So, by having elementary teachers now on the infinite campus grade book, having a set of standards and expectations for how teachers grade, now two teachers at two different sites at the same grade level, with students performing similarly, should arrive at the, at similar grades. Couldn't necessarily, um, ensure that prior to this.
All right. Jeremy, you've been here since the beginning of the learner-centered model. Is it working as intended?
Yeah. I, I, I think that, um, the, the goal that I see is more about transparency and that students know what their expectations are. And as opposed to, um, I think in some of the previous ways that we approached teaching, um, teachers held that information close to the vest and students had to sort of figure it out. Whereas if learning targets or standards are, if I know what my expectation is going into an activity, into a lesson or into a unit, then I know how to achieve mastery or meet, meet that goal. So, I think it's, it goes back to what I said earlier about shifting my motivation to a more intrinsic motivation, that I know what I have to do and my goal is to, how do I get there and what help might I need to get there? And if I do get there and I get there before other people, then how can my education be extended beyond that point? Which goes the conversation about fours, but I think there's other ways to accomplish that.
So, what do the learning guides fit into this? I mean, we have a pre and a post assessment, three-week, you know, I mean, do we get one, twos and threes on this? Uh, is, is that recorded or is that just a guide like it says? Well, what is it that ties this together?
Well, most learning guides say on them, um, what the expectation is for, you know, how you will be assessed on that. Um, but keep in mind, uh, I mean, learning guides are just the medium to communicate standards or learning targets. So, really, the important thing is the standard or the learning target, not necessarily that, the, the document that has those on them. So, as long as I know as a student what my standard or learning target is and what my expectation is, to me, that's, that's the important thing. If I get that through a learning guide, if I get that through, you know, direct teacher teaching and conversation, um, I'm not sure that.
But that brings me back to my, uh, previous comment. Twenty percent of the kids probably don't need a, a learning guide. They're independent learners and they're out there. We've got 70 to 80 percent of the kids that do need it. And you can't just say, uh, it's something. That is, this is a major, major league tool if we're going to change our S-Bac scores and we're going to change the student's success and confidence in himself or herself. So, I.
Well, I think you said it, it's a tool. And so, how you use that tool is what makes a difference. And I think if that tool is used to communicate expectations to students and students know what they're doing and why they're doing it, then that tool is effective. And so, that's.
Okay. Have you been in the classroom or are we doing that?
Um, the, the biggest shift that, that I've seen, and so, I've been obviously out of the classroom now since 2013, and last year, I spent less time in the classroom. But one thing that I would note, that I would note is that several years ago, if you went into a classroom and you asked students what they were learning, um, oftentimes what you heard was the content. So, I walked into class and I, I walked into a class one time and asked students what they were learning, and they were reading an article about cursive. And they said, we're learning about cursive. And I said, why? I said, I don't know. Um, what they were doing though was trying to, was comparing two articles. One was pro cursive and one was cursive is dead. The following year, I went into the same classroom and I asked, students were doing a different activity. I asked them what they were doing. And I said, oh, we're comparing and contrasting. And I said, oh, what are you comparing and contrasting? And they said, bears. This is sixth grade. So, the previous year, they would've told me they were learning about bears. The next year, they told me they were comparing and contrasting. To me, that's a win because the goal is not, we're learning about bears. The goal is now, we're comparing and contrasting criteria or information about, in this case, animals about bears. So, that's, therein lies the, the standard of the learning target because no English sixth grade learning target says learn about bears. It does say to be able to compare and contrast information though. So, I think that's a win.
Well. Question, comments, any more, uh, questions, comments? Anybody wanna add anything from the, uh, audience? Sue, thank you for opening this up. It's going to be continued.
Thank you.
Discussion on proposed changes to CCSC Regulation 214, Carson City School District Athletic Guidelines and Code of Ethics. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we're in good form tonight. I appreciate Mrs. Kima and her efforts, and, uh, thank you, Jeremy, for coming tonight as well. Tonight, Agenda Item Number Nine is, um, an effort to again revitalize, uh, one of our regulations here. When I first checked the Policy 214, I noticed that the regulations title and the policy title didn't match. So, first recommendation in, um, bringing this change to you tonight is to take a look at our title. And so, that's really the first item. Because most of this regulation deals with secondary students, um, I, I guess I say that just to keep in mind that, uh, that that's the, the target area for this particular, um, consideration. The first formal change that's being presented, uh, other than the title, is in Article Two, Section Three, and that is at the top of Page Three. And you'll notice there that complaint resolution has been struck through changing to resolving athletic program complaints. The reason that, uh, we did that, or at least making this, uh, recommended change is we have a number of types of complaints that come to the school district. Could include Title IX issues, could include, uh, discrimination issues, could be bullying, cyberbullying. And so, we have a variety of places where resolving complaints occur. This particular resolution is specifically dealing with complaints as they come from our athletic or our activity programs. And so, um, I, I want, I wanted to point that out. So, then further down in this section under Number Five, you'll see that we've added a job title, Athletic Administrator. So, this is at Carson High School specifically where there is one more layer of, um, of a step really, or where someone can, uh, be part of that, um, complaint resolution process. And you'll also notice that Superintendent and Board of Trustees has been crossed through because again, we have another place in Policy 903 where we have a public complaint form that can be utilized, uh, should they, uh, should a complainant not be satisfied in the process that may occur at one of the schools. I'm seeing some perplexed looks. Uh, are we okay with that? Any questions?
Well, I just had a question because you, with the removal of the Superintendent and Board of Trustees, and then going back to Page Two, under due process where the last sentence says that the, this Board of School Trustees is the final level of appeal, um, is, is section, is Page Two necessary or does removing it on Page Three remove us, the Board of Trustees, from Page Two? I'm not sure.
I, I, I see what you're saying. And there, there, Mr. Pavlakis, any thoughts on that? Because definitely due process is something that we're anxious to occur, but we are talking about, uh, maybe identifying these complaint processes at different levels.
I think if the intent here is to have athletic program complaints resolved at the principal level, then we would delete the language on Page Two. However, if there's an avenue to proceed through the Superintendent and the Board of Trustees, then.
It should stay.
Which, that should stay, and we'd need to clarify the intent on Page Three.
Okay.
Or, or should there be a reference to Policy 903? Because that's where you're sending them. Maybe a number six is if the complaint is a Title IX or discrimination claim that is under Policy 903. So that, because there are gonna be, um, complaints on, especially on those two in athletics.
And that's, that's a good suggestion. So, I suggest.
So, they'll know where to go.
Yeah. So, I would suggest then, uh, if, if you're in agreement that we take out on Page Two the line that starts out with the Board of School Trustees. I can tell you that the folks at Carson High School would prefer that they try to resolve all program complaints at that level. And then if it does, as you say.
Right. And I think the board would agree. We don't wanna be at that level either. But maybe that needs, that part needs to be to, to refer to Policy 903, just so that there's some, so that they don't, they don't feel like it's dead. If, if they still have, feel very serious about it and they feel like they've still been wronged, that they know that there's another complaint procedure to go through if they need to.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And the other question I have, so what is the Athletic Administrator and what do they do and where are they located and how do people know?
So, currently, the Athletic Administrator, that position is held by Mark Rodean. He's a dean at Carson High School, and that's one of the assignments. So, he, he works with Mr. Roman to help, uh, make sure that facilities are up to speed, that there's staffing to maintain those, um, fields and those venues. And then he is also part of the academic process. So, when, um, students are checked, their grades are checked to see whether or not they're academically, um, eligible, yep, to, to compete, he's part of that process. So, uh, that's a, a position that has evolved over time, and it is used as part of the athletic process at Carson High School. Thank you. Those were, those were good suggestions. Moving next into Article Three on that same Page Three, you'll notice that there have been three, um, sentences added, each identified, uh, Number One, Two and Three. And beginning with the Number One, it says, except where critical needs exist, administrators will not be hired as coaches. There are several reasons for inserting this, and I'd like to explain. First, um, when you have an administrator who is serving as a coach, you effectively take one of those steps of the complaint resolution process away. If the administrator is also functioning as a coach, then, uh, they have to bump that up to the next level to resolve it. So, there's, there's some benefit here in keeping the process that we've created in place. However, I, I wanted to somehow show that, um, if we can't find a coach, and, and I'll just use tennis a, a couple of years back as a what-if, if you can't find a, a, a coach either in the community or on staff, you don't wanna give up the activity because you can't find a coach. And so, if we have an individual who functions as an administrator but also has maybe a special skill that could function as a coach, uh, we're trying to identify here that we're not gonna throw out the activity just because we can't find a coach if we have somebody who's an administrator that would be willing to function in that role. You know, it sounds like I'm talking quickly, but I, we, we wanna make sure that we can provide for the students for the activities that we say that we're going to provide. But in most cases, we're gonna try to find someone other than an administrator to take that role.
Do we define in here anywhere what, what a critical need? I mean, to me, a critical need is nobody stepping up. We have nobody to coach the team. Or we have somebody that wants to coach, but quite frankly, they're incompetent.
Yeah, yeah. That's my other concern.
But beyond that, do we have a critical need?
Yeah. I, I don't want, if no, if no, if the only person stepping up is someone who's never done it before, I'd rather have an administrator in there. And then my other question is, um...
And then my other question is, how does this affect Coach Roman? Because he's also the athletic director, but he's our football coach.
It's not an administrative position.
Well, but he's, but then if that's one of the things, he's, he's one of the levels of the complaint.
His boss is the athletic administrator. He's in the OCE.
So, and that's true, Mr. Green. Mr. Roman is a teacher. He's not functioning in an administrative capacity other than being that administrative, or that, sorry, athletic director.
So the athletic director is not
Not considered an administrator.
Okay.
At least by virtue of licensure, maybe is another way to think of it. So thank you for that. Lack of qualified applicants might help to define something other than critical need.
Yeah, I think it's just important to define what that means so that when we have these rare situations where somebody says, hey, I was, you know, I was wronged, we have something to fall back on and say, you know, this is, you know, this, this is why we did this. This falls into this definition.
I can also tell you that several years back, we had one of our administrators who was functioning as a, as a coach, and it caused a little bit of internal strife because one of the individuals was down on the sidelines while the other people that were administrators were being asked to do administrative duties like crowd control and those kinds of things. And there's actually a little stipend that's associated with coaching. And it just helps to keep the, the job assignments consistent with each other, and it helps to reduce some of that, you know, someone thinking that someone else is getting a benefit over the other. So there are some, and we do actually do this now. This is something that we're doing in general form. This would help to solidify more of our practices by inserting it in this regulation. Any other thoughts or considerations?
Another question as far as the not having administrators as coaches, is that something that's recommended by NIAA? Or is that consistent with, with something from them? Or is it just, is it general practice? Or is it just us coming up with it on our own?
I'm not aware of it, but I can tell you, coming from a very small school district at one time, sometimes it was necessary to have administrators work in that capacity. But it always created a situation where it, it sometimes required the person next up the chain of command in order to resolve issues. Not that that's a bad thing, but it, it just fact of life.
Right, and there's nothing in like their booklet, and there's nothing in the NACs that says specifically that. Because, because of the rules especially, because the principal is the football coach and the A.D., and so there's a lot of overlapping at, at that level. So, and they even have that in Vegas. There's a couple of schools that the athletic director is the football coach like ours. So, but I did go through their NACs and look at it. And, and bumping on top of that, I kind of like to see a section because the NIAA has that code of conduct for coaches. And I'm not sure where you want to put that in there, but it, it's been real, one of the big issues that we've had because of the, some coaches going after officials, and I know that's in there. But it, it goes over a whole thing of what they should be doing as that, in fact, doing teachable moments, looking at citizenship, looking at sportsmanship. So maybe just a blurb about that coaches need to adhere to the NIAA's code of conduct. Because that'll change, so you don't need the exact wording. But I'd like to see something in that that kind of links their programs and our programs.
And then Richard, just, not that I want this added, but just something to think about. How does this whole, you know, when we talk about administrators and coaches, you kind of naturally, and I think about the issue we had with cheerleaders a while ago, with nepotism. You know, you have a coach and their kid's on the team, you know, and are we concerned about that? I mean, I know the smaller district you have, you sometimes can't get away from that, but I, I think we just want to think about how we treat that so we're careful that, you know, we're not, you're not favoring somebody because they're a friend or a relative or that kind of thing. You know?
It's a nice segue, Mr. Cassiopoul. I think Item Number Two kind of takes us into that, that arena. And this is something that we dealt with here just recently, but when a new head coach is selected, again, we have in the past allowed for that new head coach to hire assistant coaches. And I would add as, since you first got your packet, may hire assistant coaches and volunteers of his or her choice, subject to approval by the athletic director. And then we would, as a result of any new hires like that, probably have a conversation with that new head coach about family members. I mean, it makes perfect sense that we would want to stay away from things that could represent liability for the district where we have policies against that nepotism condition. Any other thoughts that we might add to in this particular? Anybody have difficulty with the insertion of "and" volunteers? Because I think that that's
Are they hired?
I'm sorry?
Would they be hired?
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be receiving compensation, but they would be recognized. I mean, they might get a golf shirt or something to recognize them as someone who's assisting.
But they probably need a background check if they're regularly volunteering like that. So maybe there's that.
All those things would apply.
But if you're called a volunteer in the school district, there's a, on our definitions says you go through this procedure to be a volunteer. So I don't think it needs to be.
Yeah, but he or she may hire assistant coaches and volunteers. So we got to figure out how enlist, I don't know.
I see, I see. So make sure that the
You need to say hire assistant coaches or select volunteers.
And select volunteers.
Just to separate it from hiring.
Okay, thank you.
And Richard, just before we go on, just real, real simple. Article One, Section Three, Complaint Review. The very last sentence ends with follow the procedures established in Article Two, Section Three, Complaint Resolution. Since we changed the title of Complaint Resolution, we should update that, that Article One, Section to Resolving Athletic Program Complaints.
Could you point me to where that is again?
Yeah, Page Two.
Okay, got it.
Section Three, Complaint Review.
Section, okay.
Last section, or last sentence.
The last sentence, the very last two words say, say Complaint Resolution, and it's referring to Article Two, Section Three. And we changed the title Complaint Resolution to Resolving Athletic Program Complaints.
Got it, thank you. So one last insertion here. Article Three, Section Two, this is Item Number Three. We essentially took the existing sentence and shortened it down just to say that coaches must adhere to all district policies, rules, and regulations without that added last little part.
And should the NIAA be in there too? Or is that just a given?
That might be like a good fourth bullet.
The governing body.
I got one, and going back to Number Two there about a new coach, subject to approval of the athletic director.
Yes.
I guess I'm being picky, but if the head coach happens to be the athletic director, would you jump that up to the athletic administrator?
Well, that's a good point.
That's actually a good catch.
Yeah, that's a really good catch.
Use an "and/or." That work?
I think you have to make the distinction if the athletic director is the coach, then he needs to be approved by the adminis, athletic administrator.
His volunteers or his, and his, and his hires would have to be approved. Maybe even a second sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In cases where
If, if the coach happens to be the athletic director, approval would be by the athletic administrator, something like that.
Okay, Richard, this regulation, although it refers to the Carson City School District, for the most part, we're, like you said, we're talking about the Carson High School program. Does any of this apply to middle schools and coaches and athletics? I mean, does this, or do we have something that's separate?
There's a can of worms.
Yeah, I don't know. How far does this go? When you, when we, we say the Carson City School District, but it is really talking about Carson High School.
I, I believe personally that there's enough general latitude and, I don't know, expectation that it would be across the district.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, like we don't have, do we have athletic directors at?
We, yes, we do.
We do?
They function slightly different. They, they work within the TANeva Athletic League as opposed to the NIAA. So NIAA references wouldn't necessarily translate, but I, I believe all the other things would. We have in our collective bargaining agreement, the amount that we'll pay our coaches at the middle school level. And essentially, without the office of having an athletic administrator, we have the same structure of leadership that exists at both sides. Okay, we're almost done for this particular proposed changes in this regulation. If I could have you turn to Page Number Four. Article Four, Section Two, and this is in reference to players that become injured. We're proposing to add one sentence at the end of that paragraph saying, "District incident and accident reporting procedures will be followed." This is an effort to make sure that injured students are recognized, identified, and that treatment is given and followed up. This was a recommendation through our risk manager's office.
Does our incident and accident reporting have stuff in there about the concussion protocol?
It, it would expect that if the student athlete is being treated or seen at a contest or practice by an athletic trainer or by a physician, that that becomes reported then to District Risk Management Officer.
Is, I mean, are we talking like sprain your ankle, run off the sidelines? What sort of workload is this going to put on? Because like football, there's dings every day.
Sure. Abrasions, broken fingernails, I mean, things that hurt a lot that may not have to be reported to the risk manager. So, so if the student has a head injury or whether or not there is treatment that's given by a physician, that might be different than, you know, spraying some tough skin on a, on an abrasion on your knee. But something that might require a follow-up by a physician is what we're talking about. I, we can clarify that. Okay, that's really all of the changes in this particular regulation. Any other thoughts as you've had a chance to read or consider?
Just another small one on the same page, Richard, Page Four. Section Three says conduct of coaches during a game. Some of our high school events, and they can cross-country and track, they don't play games, but they have events, so shouldn't, should we be using the term?
Activity?
Yeah, maybe of coaches during an activity. Because I'm guessing that kind of applies to games, practices, events. So something that's more, more generic.
And then maybe on Page One, that first sentence, the second part down that says, "Best interest of athletic participants, programs, and the coaching profession," should think professionals might sound better than profession? Laurel?
Say that again?
Because it is the profession or is it the people we're talking about?
I think it's fine to say the coaching profession because participants and programs are not, programs are not people. And then it's the coaching profession. Whether or not it's a profession may be debatable, but
Yeah, but I think it's probably fine to use it that way.
Yeah.
And then on Page Five, Section Six, "Every coach should initiate a positive letter to the parents of the participants." Are they doing that? I don't know any letter I ever got from a coach. And NIA, NIAA says that same thing, but I don't know.
I know that they, each sport has a preseason meeting where the parents are invited, and at that point, there's an effort for the coach to make a good impression.
I've received letters for cross-country and swimming and track. They usually give an, it's, it's more of an informative letter and what you need to know, but it, it, yeah, I've gotten them for the sports that my kids have played at the high school.
Maybe if you don't want to say letters, should initiate positive correspondence with parents and participants?
Something. I don't think letter works there, just because it's a different age.
You know what, though? They all hand out paperwork at the beginning. At least what I've, they've all, they all give you a paperwork.
But is that positive? Is that?
Why wouldn't it be? Here's our season.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm not saying that it's a bad thing or it's a good thing or people are doing. I'm just, it's, it's in the regulation. So I'm just trying to figure out, is it necessary to have that in there? Or is there something more we could say about coach-parent relationships?
Correspondence is a good word because I think that can
Kind of cover
Be a text, that can be a piece of paper, that can be a lot of things.
And maybe some of them send it by email, but I've always gotten a hard copy so far.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
And then maybe just expanding the good sportsmanship part in Section Three on that one. Just because that's been a bona contention at, at the high school level, mainly in Vegas right now, but
What do you mean, expand it?
I don't know, I'm not sure. I'm, I'll email you some stuff from the NIAA, and maybe you can just incorporate that in there.
I'll watch for that.
Because I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't do that earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, additional comments, questions, seeing none. Any questions from the audience? Anybody want to jump in? Okay, seeing none. All right. Agenda Item Number, well, Number Ten. Informational update and satisfactory items relating to the education from the 2017 Nevada Legislative Session requiring action by the district. Richard, you're on again.
Thank you, Mr. Swirzick, members of the Board. Several meetings ago, Trustee McCullough asked us to take a look at the 2017 Legislative Session and go through the bills that were related to education and bring back a report as to the district's status in implementing the educational bills from that session. And so the document that you have in your packet is a breakdown of the various education bills, their number, a brief explanation as to what is expected, and then whether or not the district has met or has not met, or is in some process of completing these individual bills into our operations. So I didn't intend to go through all of the items that are complete. I did, however, want to give some brief explanations on any that are incomplete and/or answer any questions that you might have as to how we are meeting some of these expectations. So the first one that comes along is SB 322. You'll notice that we have a little time to complete this one. The effective date of this bill is July 1, 2019, and it actually implements another graduation requirement where students will be required to pass an examination that is similar to the naturalization tests that are given to individuals who are trying to become citizens. So the thinking behind this is that our high school graduates don't know enough about the United States government and processes, and so the desire here is that they'll have to pass this exam in order to graduate. So
Will NBD be writing this exam? Are we to write it ourselves?
Yeah, no, we're expecting help from them, or at least guidance as to what's going on. At least 50 questions are supposed to be taken from the actual exam so that both naturalized citizens and naturally, natural-born citizens have similar understanding of governmental Okay, the next one is Okay, the next one is, item num, let's see, AB 292, and I, I want you to know that we have done a significant amount of training for the changes that are occurring to the bullying laws in the state of Nevada. We had Ann Alexander come and talk to us and train our administrators in our first principals' meeting. So, we have a few policies that are being finalized, and so, we are practicing some of these expectations, even though there will yet be policy developed and brought before the board to finalize those. And this is, is one that actually is part of that. AB 305, I'm sorry?
Do, do, does that, does it have to be substantiated bullying? Or is it, or is it make for route for parents to get variances for the kids? You know what I mean?
Well, and this is something that we, we end up offering on occasion. If a family comes in and we can definitely see that there's been an impact on the student, or the family is just really unhappy with their placement, we work hard to try to find a spot where they'll be happier. And so, again, that's just part of our practice. It doesn't necessarily state that anywhere, which is, I think, an indication of what they're desiring in this particular policy, or request in this bill. AB 305, we are not complete on that. We are waiting, obviously, for some direction and guidance, again, from Department of Child and Family Services. So, DCFS will be a partner in helping to finalize that particular item. SB 287 requires all employees and volunteers to report suspected abuse or neglect within 24 hours. This is going to be a big item. Now, we are already doing mandatory background checks for our employees and all of our volunteers. That's something that we've been doing in this district for almost 20 years. It's very expensive. Our system allows for background checks to be good for three years, and then, through HR, they go through the process of notifying those volunteers, and then if they still want to maintain that status, they go through another round of volun, or of, of background checks. But one of the pieces here is that because of this particular law, all of those volunteers now become mandatory reporters. And that means that we now have an added expectation to train those folks as mandatory reporters as they come through our system as volunteers. So, this is something that we, we need to have a process for. And I don't know, Dr. Delphin, if there's some part of this that we're already doing, but this, this is, this is going to be a big job, and it will take some significant effort to cover that.
Is there a video that already exists that explains mandatory reporting requirements? Because that would seem to be an easier way to train volunteers to say, "Hey, go watch this video, verify that they've gone through that."
And I think each state is slightly different, but obviously, in Nevada, we turn to the statute as it applies there.
Jose Delphin, for the record. I spoke with Mrs. Seer, our risk manager, and we have looked at a few videos, as you have mentioned, that might expedite the training and put it on our website. Ann and I have not found one that was appropriate yet for our particular needs, so we're hoping to partner up with Department of Ed, since they made this mandate, that we're hoping that they deliver some resources for us to be consistent with all the other, other districts.
On the next page, AB 117 is a pretty good-sized bill that requires some policy updates for us. One of the items that stands out in this particular bill is to create an academic plan for every student in grades nine through 12. We are, and have been doing that in practice, but this will require us to modify Policy 514 and Regulation 514. And we're, again, in the process of that. We're working with administrators and deans at the schools to help make sure that this gets accomplished. SB 213 is similar. Again, we are doing some of this work already, but we need to formalize it in our policy. SB 273, this is, this is a new piece, and in the past, at least in our collective bargaining agreements, probationary employees have not had much protection in terms of being able to go from being a probationary employee to being post-probationary. This particular bill permits probationary employees to request expedited arbitration before being recommended for termination. So, this is really something that'll need to be taken up in the collective bargaining process, and I expect that to occur in the next, next go-around. Let's see. AB 451 is something that we'll probably want to insert into our board bylaws, and that has to do just simply with the, with the six hours of training expected of trustees in their first and third year. AB 275, this is something that I believe has some tendrils into our strategic plan. We are doing now a, an annual assessment to improve our connectivity with our families and, and engaging them with our schools. We'll need to get a little more detail with regard to what needs assessment for academic and non-academic needs mean, but we can certainly, I think, put those two components together and push those out in such a way that, that we can not only meet the expectations of our strategic plan, but also this particular bill. Also, provide a mechanism to make database decisions. We feel like a lot of what we had, not only with Mastery Connect, and also with our student information system, of course, close record-keeping of both our admin, our fiscal services and human resources. We've, we've got a lot of that data already in place. Implement support systems, you know, at some point, you kind of have to determine how many of those you're going to make available, and of course, they look different throughout all of our levels. And then, we also believe that we're, we're meeting some of that with our social workers, which also are helping us to identify families that might need to have additional professionals to help them in their individual families. So, we, we have some things going here in AB 275, but there are also some items that we need to yet complete. SB 66 prescribes requirements for a work-based learning program. We feel like we're in a good place there, moving in a good direction, and also following some of the work that's yet coming out of the governor's office and the Department of Education. SB 112, I thought was interesting, to actually require a law being passed to talk about or to teach being an organ donor. And this is partially complete at the high school level. It also indicates that this is something that should be talked about at the middle school level as well. So, that's an area that we've got to do a little bit of work. SB 132, this talks about inviting back-to-school students who may not have graduated with their cohort class. So, if you have someone that we consider maybe a fifth-year senior, someone who hasn't met all of the requirements to graduate from high school, they are to have the same kind of academic plan that we mentioned earlier, AB 117, and so, we can include that aspect of SB 132 into our, into our policy on academic plans.
So, Richard, just on that, it, just the wording caught me weird. It said, "for seniors taking at least three semesters longer to graduate." Dumb question, I guess, but what about taking one or two semesters longer? Do we have the same opportunity for them?
Yes, I think what the intent with this particular bill is to not go longer than three semesters. So, we have, we have special education students that can attend school with us until they're 22. But if you have a student that maybe just, I don't know, is not serious about school, if they take too long, I, I think any of us here would say, if someone is just trying hard to get through school and wants to get that high school diploma, at some point, the adult education program kicks in, and we would say, you know, maybe this is a better route for you to, to finish up your education. But if somebody says, "Hey, I'm, I'm all but there," and maybe there's some other considerations in this student's life, or, or maybe some experience that happened early on that has contributed to them not finishing, we might want to give them the benefit of the doubt, help them as much as we can. But there is, there's kind of this endpoint where we say, you know, "It's time for you to maybe move on to the next, next level."
And I think that the principles at Carson High and Pioneer and Sam Santillo have worked really well the last couple of years, taking care of this before it gets to this point, too. And so, I'm, I'm really happy. I think we have actually completed that, and that would be one of the things that I would use when I testify on that bill.
Yeah, and thank you. I, I think they would appreciate that. I, I think the increases in graduation rates are proving that they are not letting kids fall through the cracks to the extent that they can. They're trying to scoop those kids up and making sure that they are exposed to the materials and the effort that it takes for them to graduate. SB 241, some of our students have the opportunity to receive multiple additional seals on their diploma, and this is another one. Students who meet expectations can receive a STEAM seal, of course, which stands for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. And so, students taking the coursework, allowing them to qualify for this seal. We're just waiting from the, for the DOE to provide those little stickers for us that we can attach to the diplomas.
So, you have the actual requirements for that, or are you just saying you just need the seals?
Both, both. We'll, we'll need direction from the Department of Ed to qualify, which, for example, arts classes may or may not qualify, and whatever else. Yeah, so, so we need some additional guidance from the department on that one. SB 386 is a pretty involved bill, and I know Mrs. Kima has been working with some district staff, because in this particular bill, you have a condition where if a student is disruptive in a class for any reason, and the teacher has maybe hit the end of his or her rope with this particular student, we are being asked to formalize this process that will, one, provide due process for the student, but also provide relief for the teacher. And so, this is an important process. It does require that we create a committee that can help to make a determination on any given student if, if the student is asked to leave the class, and if there's some dispute as to the outcome of the, the discipline that's being given to the student. And so, even though this is very involved, Mrs. Kima has indicated that she expects by the middle of September, this will be brought to a head, and, and the policy and the process will be completed. So, I hope this is helpful. This helps us, actually, and so, we appreciate the opportunity to, to present. It helps us see what kind of work effort we yet have in front of us before the session begins, and will also help us as we prepare for any testimony to modify any of these things that might come up as a result of the legislature.
And I just wanted to thank staff and you, Mr. Stokes, for taking this on, because as you guys know, we get this from Dottie every year that details all the bills. And it'll be real important when we go and say, "They're going to ask us, like on AB 305, why didn't you do that?" And we can say, "Well, because the child, the, the agency didn't give us the stuff," or "the Department of Ed has not given us guidance in two years." It's not, and we can kind of compare county to county, district to district now, too, because we're all kind of on the same page, so we'll know it's working. So, I do appreciate the, the time and effort that was put into this, and I think it'll be real helpful for us and our group and our, our board when we get to that 2019 session. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, thank you. Going on to Agenda Item Number 11, informational update regarding the use and placement of substitute teachers in the elementary schools in the Carson City School District to include available various data points. Richard and Sue.
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the board. I, I wanted to start my remarks off this evening by, one, thanking this body. It's nice to work for a group of individuals who care deeply about our students, and I've observed some places that maybe that's, maybe not always at the forefront, and so, I just want to say thanks for that. I know that we've talked about this particular topic to a great degree, and as we left the last meeting, trying to, trying to do as you had asked, tried to come back with some data that might be helpful as we continue this discussion, that challenged us a lot. And we hope to be able to maybe share some thoughts and some ideas that we would like to accomplish in, in really trying to solve this situation and trying to improve our, our, our work effort in the school district. So, just move here to this next slide. We've recognized that a lot of school districts across the country are having the same, same concern, and we're looking at it as a problem of practice. In other words, how can we make sure that our students have the ability to be taught by fully credentialed teachers in such a way that they're not, they're not harmed in, in some other way? So, at least making sure that we can have students who are not being taught for consecutive years by long-term subs. We were challenged by figuring out what everybody thinks a substitute teacher is, and I want to just go through this slide with you to give you a, an example. At Boarderwick Bray, we have teachers there who, in this, in this week exactly, one, received their formal teaching license from the Department of Ed. So, last week, if we'd had the same conversation, that individual would have been a substitute teacher. But because licensure was officially granted by the Department of Ed, today, that individual is no longer a substitute, but a fully-blown teacher. And so, it's, it's those kinds of conditions that if we're trying to wade through years of data, it, it's kind of hard to have some of that information right at your fingertips. We also have a situation where, if you look at the number of students affected, we have a, a substitute teacher that's teaching PE at Fritsch Elementary. And so, to count the students that are affected, you basically have to count every student that's, that's at the school, because that teacher sees every student that's enrolled there. Does that have the same impact on those 585 students that it might have if, if we're talking about another substitute, maybe in another grade where they're in a core classroom? So, there's, there's a lot of different conditions and situations that apply here, and so, we wanted to share this information with you, because even at Boarderwick Bray, there's another individual there who, right now, is being paid and has started the school year as a paraprofessional. But there, again, there's another licensing issue, because she has completed all of the coursework and has the transcripts to... all of the coursework and has the transcripts to, uh, make full application to become a substitute. But even so, she will be a long-term substitute teacher at the, at the building. And so these are just a, a variety of conditions and situations. If you happen to have looked at the document that was in your packet, you will have seen, uh, another designation, which is ARL, or Alternative Route to Licensure. So these are individuals that are, um, college graduates. They have a four-year degree. They may not have been trained as a teacher, but yet their contact, content area might be, um, above reproach. I mean, very, very qualified individuals, yet they may not have had the same, uh, official training as a, um, licensed teacher in things such as, um, classroom management and strategies and, um, use of technology in education, those kinds of things that are in typical teacher programs. So, uh, with that, I'm going to turn some time over to Mrs. Kima, and, uh, we're going to talk about, uh, where we go from here, and the types of supports that we have available, not only to our, um, teachers of, uh, that are assigned to individual classrooms, but also to our substitutes who might be long-term.
Susan Kima for the record. So the type of substitutes that we have in the district, um, we have two stu, two student teachers. They're both happen to be the two substitutes that are at Mark Twain. Um, then we have, as Mr. Stokes explained, we have three folks that are, um, on their alternate route to licensure. That means they've had a degree in something. We do this quite often. We do this quite often in CDE, where maybe they've had a degree in engineering or a degree in something else, but they didn't have the teaching courses. And then we work through that with them in an accredited program out of, of, uh, Mr. Delphin's office. Those folks, because they're tied to the university, have university support that comes out and monitors them, just like any other, uh, beginning teacher. Uh, this year, we, uh, invited all of our, uh, long-term subs to new hire training under Carrie Pryor. Uh, we have site mentors and, of course, site coaches. Um, and Mrs., uh, or Carrie Pryor, as our new hire coordinator, she is supporting them just like she would any other new teacher to our district. Um, the next two categories, former fully licensed teachers, with those might, we have one of those, that, that could be a retired teacher from our district, that could be a retired teacher from California, another state, another county, another district. Um, and they were, again, invited to new hire training, and then we have site coaches as well, as well as, uh, Carrie Pryor. And then our substitute, um, teachers that are, that are, um, don't have a degree, were never a teacher, but completed the coursework in order to be, obtain their substitute license. And so you can see the type of support that we have there. So, for example, um, just looking at those substitutes and looking at our ARL, um, when talking to, um, Carrie Pryor today, we were talking about the fact that by including them in new hire and having her mentor and support these, um, substitutes, it's almost a recruiting piece, because sometimes, some of our substitutes end up becoming our very best teachers, you know? They, they have the incentive, um, they're maybe substituting while they're in school, they're substituting while, um, and in hoping to go to school. And eventually, we have many, many of our teachers have gone through that route, is either a substitute, or they were a paraprofessional, and then they became teachers in our district. So we look at especially, um, a way to keep our substitutes by providing this kind of support. We want to keep them in our district, too, because substitutes can substitute in Lyon County, in Washoe County, in Douglas County. They can substitute somewhere else. And not only are we in competition for teachers, we're in competition for super, uh, substitutes. So by providing them support, it, it's, while it may be, you know, in one sense, there's a business plus to it. Most importantly, by supporting them, this way it supports the students and, and, and the schools. Some resolution as far as, um, solving this problem of practice, based on the conversations, um, during the last board meeting, um, we will continue to recruit highly qualified permanent employees, continue to work with colleagues in universities in support of student teachers and ARL, um, alternative, um, licensed candidates, continue to seek out retired teachers to fill long-term positions. In the spring, um, we talked, I think extensively at the last board meeting, um, that we will make sure that as we're coding students with long-term substitutes, um, for fall class placement decision, to try to avoid that two years in a row of having a long-term substitute. And then, um, should the board request that, we certainly can report progress, um, quarterly or by the semester to you, so that you can see that we're trying to re, work on this problem of practice, that we both have this, the same goal, is to reduce students, um, facing long-term subs. So for example, if, you know, things go well with our long, our, our student teachers, and things go well with the university and our student teachers, the two teachers over at Mark Twain, if I would report to you in January, what we've done should be fully, you know, permanent licensed teachers, because they will have completed their student teaching responsibilities.
Mrs. Kima, if I could add, um, I also keep track of our December grads coming out of universities, so, uh, UNR, Sierra Nevada College, any of those colleges near us, that, uh, I'm constantly, uh, working with their, uh, placement career offices to be able to recruit teachers mid-year.
And this summer, we had-
Sorry, I was just going to piggyback on that. I was up at UNR talking with the Department of Education last week, and I forgot his last name, but Joe.
Yeah, he's got your name, Joe Nanini.
That's how I remembered that. But he said the same thing. He spends a lot of time speaking with a lot of HR folks, but specifically, he said Dr. Delphin. They're in almost constant communication, so.
Great. And, and our teachers are getting involved. Um, I think it was, uh, Carrie Pryor that told me this morning, or the summer, that one of the, one of the teachers from our schools was putting on Facebook, "Come to Carson City. We're the best district in the state," you know? And he was trying to recruit his Washoe pals to, to our district. So, um, having our teachers getting involved and, and talking about is the best PR. Having our dis, having our teachers, um, talking about the good things and their, and their work environment and the students and the families is a really good way to recruit people. So are there any questions?
Any questions, concerns, comments? Ryan?
Are, are we still going to get actual data on this? Because I thought that's what we discussed the last meeting, that, that we were going to get hard data.
So this is the hard data. And I, um, then I know the request was to, um, put together five years' worth of data for only elementary students. Um, and as we were, um, as we were trying to rise to that challenge, this is the kind of issues that we found. What was, could you recall what was our term for long-term substitute? Was it a semester? Was it two weeks? Was it a year? Did you want it for when we started at the beginning of the year, or when somebody took pregnancy leave or FMLA in some sort in the middle of the year when there was an emergency? Working with the principals, and a lot of this is site-based, we have two out of our six principals from the elementary that have been in their position five years or longer. We've been, we would have to try to figure out the data between two student information systems. What also happens, let's say, um, uh, Mrs. Wilkie is the homeroom teacher, and she goes out on a long-term bereavement. In infinite campus, the long-term sub is not in there. It's Mrs. Wilkie that's in there. So then the data, data's not going to be accurate. Um, the, the, the fluidity of the issuance of teacher licenses, for example, when they were talking about that particular teacher at Boarderwick, the first day of school, she was a substitute. By the end of the week, she was not. So even though she, it looked like those students had a long-term sub, they don't, unless your definition is longer, short, shorter than that. Um, the transency of student population, we know that if, let's say I've got the, the office managers and the principals, they start working on who had substitutes last year, then we need to make sure that we track them down on what other school they might have transferred to within the district to see if they have a long-term sub, or they may not be with us. And then something else to think about that changes and skews the data is that, um, I may be the homeroom teacher that's a long-term sub. Mr. Stokes may be another homeroom teacher that is, is a permanent employee, but my students, I may have five of my students that go to him for reading for 90 minutes every day. And maybe in my particular school, they go out for math, too. So I, I don't know how, that kind of skews the data. And then, of course, um, challenges is just continuing to look for, for substitutes. So nobody wants to move away from the challenge of what you're asking us. But I think what we took away from this was the, was the, um, was that the problem of practice was to not have students, um, exposed to long-term substitutes two years in a row. To track that and bring that to you, I can spend most of my year trying to work on that, and I don't think it's going to be accurate for you. But I wanted to, we wanted to paint the picture of what does it look like on the first day of school? And is it a problem in our district? And how can we prevent it from happening for the students that are sitting in these classes, so that they don't have substitutes next year?
And Ryan, you know, I, I, you know, I did talk to, um, Richard before, you know, about, you know, the data we did request. And it makes sense, the important thing was going forward, how are we going to stop it? And I think the, and the resolution, the last two items, that if we can get a report, I mean, in the springtime, you're going to have the codes, bring it to the board. I mean, is there any, or what have you done to prevent this, or minimize this from, the risk from this happening again? And then the report, the quarterly progress, the board of trustees, that would, I, I think that's important, just what have we done? Have we taken a step better with, with our, with our substitutes? So I think that would give us the information that we need going forward. Ryan?
I think this is a blatant dodge, honestly. We, we, we talked about, you haven't even tell, I thought October seemed kind of long. If, we did discuss a lot of the parameters. We can go back and review the meeting, um, you know, and, and I thought we'd sort of hashed that out, but we also left it to you with the data to find what, what was at least close, or bring back something. To bring back, like, nothing? I, I agree that maybe we identified the problem, but it's, it feels like you're hiding something, honestly.
I, I think there are significant difficulties in collecting the data that's requested by that, that would take up, in my opinion, excessive amounts of staff's time. Um, and may, it, I, I don't feel that, to, to me, I don't feel that there's a, a bene, a benefit of putting the time in that, because I don't think that we're going to, I, there's going to be so many variables in what that information would give us, that I don't know that it would help us to go forward. And I just feel like there's other, better uses of their time, um, and, and efforts. And I, I don't, I, I don't feel that it's something that's, um, I, I just don't feel that there's, there's something being hidden. I, I think the infinite campus and the power school transfer makes that extraordinarily difficult to go through, and the turnover of the principals is, you know, we've got new principals at so many sites. That's a lot of information to-
The bottom line, we're going to come back to that's what our first day of school looked like. Those students are, have long-term subs, and that's what we need to reduce.
Yeah, and Ryan, just, uh, you know, you, you might have that feeling about, you know, there's something trying to be hidden. I, I don't think so. I, I don't think that's, that's the issue. I, everybody cares about the students. You care, we all care. And, and I think it was important that going forward, what do we do, the steps, what you brought up, have, have we found a way to, to minimize the risk of, of this happening in, in the future? And I think they have, with quarterly reports and for, um, you know, this coding that we heard from some of the principals, a couple principals last year. We get a report on that, then we know. Uh, and, and probably there'd be more attention paid to it, and if there's, we're probably not going to have that, that, that issue going forward unless there's an exception, so.
I think, um, you know, I don't think anything's being hidden, but I would have liked to have seen some data as well. I mean, we, we didn't clearly define what we thought, you know, I sat there with, um, Jennifer DeJoseph, and I said, you know, I don't know what's long, what is long-term, and I threw out, I forget what I threw out, two weeks, three weeks, and she said, you know, two hours. And so there's, you know, where are we at? But, you know, for me, we're, we're going to, probably in a couple meetings, we're going to be talking about Sback data, and we're going to go back to, gee, the scores aren't what we hoped they were. We're, we've got procedures in place to do things, but in the end, we're going to see scores that haven't really gone up. And what, really what I was getting at with this is, is this a problem in the district that's, is impacting our test scores and our achievement of our students? I mean, in the end, that's really what I want to know. And I think we'll find that, obviously, if you have students, I would think, being taught by substitutes two years in a row, that probably adds to it. I mean, like you said, 20% of these kids, it's not going to matter who teaches them. They got it figured out. But for the other 80%, all these little factors matter. And so just trying to hone in on what, what can we do, again, what can we do to achieve our test scores and, and, and help our students achieve? Because, you know, I think all of us up here, and, and you as well, want to see better test scores. And I want to get us, you know, we have a lot of procedures in place, but our procedures need to yield results, and we're not getting the results I think we all want to see yet. And that's the frustrating part for, I would say, most all of us here.
I just, I, I, I think it's pointed out that with this, particularly at the elementary level, most of the kids have a different teacher for reading, and some of them have a different teacher for math. And to be able to go back and track and to make any type of correlation between who had a long-term sub when they may have had a fully certified reading teacher the entire year, it, to me, it's too nebulous to, to try to get any kind of good data. I mean, maybe there's some master student or PhD student out there who wants to take on such a project. But, um, I, 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 that would be a, a very large undertaking that might not give us really any valuable information.
And I apologize for missing last meeting and the discussion of that, um, because I wasn't here. And I would rather see us follow these substitutes that we've named. I'd like to start at this point. We know where we're at and start, this is the benchmark, which would make it easier to follow. Next year, you'll have names, you'll have classes, you'll have grades. But to go back and spend time figuring out what we did wrong, when we've already come up with some solutions to, to go forward, I think is better use of our time and our staff's time. I mean, there's nothing we're going to change that we've done in the past with the long-term subs, and I don't think there's any way to really get that, that data that you guys are looking for. Maybe, because I'm not the stats person, but if you ask Dr. Medina, maybe he could, I'm sure that's what you've asked, and that's where we came up with these, um, problems. So I would rather focus on the list that we have now, the plan that we have put in place, and then, like they said, the quarterly reports. Let's look, what are their Sback scores? And it's not going to affect second grade at all. There's not one second-grade teacher that's a long-term sub. So you have a base right there. So I, I would rather have staff's time looking at, starting here as a baseline, and going forward from here. I don't think we're hiding anything. I think it's just too hard to find. So-
Well, I think the important thing is, Ryan, you brought it up, it was a good point. You and, and, uh, Trustee Walker, it brought it to this point, to, to where we've got some, uh, you know, some resolutions or some solutions going forward. And if we don't have Sback data, I mean, going forward, we've got MAP data, you know, we can do a lot of things going forward now to, to monitor these kids. So, and that's what we want.
Mr. President, Trustee Walker, obviously not here tonight. He's attending, uh, Lyon County School Board's meeting.
He's attending Lion County School Board's meeting. I have a scheduled meeting with him, and we'll continue the discussion. I know he was anxious to have participated tonight, and we'll follow up with his same presentation and certainly take your feedback.
Any other questions, concerns? And I would just add, Joe, you have, when we get to the Sback scores, you know, I bring up learning guides. I bring up a lot of things in the learner-centered model, and this is going to be a great discussion. I'm stopping right there. We're not going to do that, so. I'm just making a follow-up to a comment.
It's a prelude.
Yeah, so. Agenda item number 12, approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, and I've got just one for this discussion, and before I ask for, well, maybe, while I'm going to bring this up, then I'll ask for the audience. You know, in the consent agenda, the number of students requesting exemption from vaccinations, does it, is it more than it's been in previous years?
It doesn't seem like it.
Renee sees these every year, and she's shaking her head no. I'm going to go with a no.
At the start of the school year.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda item number 13, informational items for discussion only. The only thing I would note on the information item would be the PLC meeting on the Wednesday, September 26th at the high school. And I think if we could all be there, it would be, I think it'd be helpful, so.
I'll be in Vegas. September, if my marriage survives September, it'll be a miracle.
Okay, any other comments on the informational items?
Just, I have an NIAA meeting September 10th or 11th, so if anybody has anything to bring up, let me know for that, too.
Request for future agenda topics. Without objection, we are adjourned.